Glad to order the study session.
Hey, good. Anyway, good evening and it's my pleasure and Joel Galante's pleasure to make this presentation to your city council tonight. Of our study that we did for the police department and how do the city could best upgrade its facilities, existing city hall facilities to accommodate a 21st century police operation in a safe and secure manner and the let me just get back to the other page. So I, we have a series of slides for you that basically we're starting with the lower level, going to the main level. The site and then we're going to show the demolition drawings that would be needed to accommodate this proposal. And then some cost numbers to present to you, which are very preliminary. The, the program itself ended up with a series of meetings with the chief and sergeant saying as well as Joel and myself. Going over the program to discuss what the needs of the department were as well as future growth and operational issues as well. The what we've done is to be able to provide lockers for 16 male and five female. A break training room in the lower level. Evidence prep has been modified where the old lockers were to show lockers and then a property storage room. And then we're going to continue the, in the existing space by the stair, we're going to put an armory. The IT closet's going to remain, the stairs are going to remain. The existing bathroom that has the shower and the mechanical room will also stay with some upgrades, of course. One of the important elements of the break area is that it can also serve as a training space for up to about seven or eight participants, whether they be members of the department or members of other departments that are coming in to share a trainer. That room can be configured to provide training space for up to approximately eight people. And one of the questions and issues that we brought up and is an open item would be using the stair at the north end of the building to access the second floor console chamber for larger training sessions. And this would require though, that, that passageway from the second floor lobby into the city council chamber to have a door that could be closed. So the public would be not, not accessing that space, the council space when, when and if police were using it for training. It's just a thought for a larger training area that we didn't have to accommodate in the existing space. The let me see if I can hit the page down. The main level. We maintain the, the front desk, but we're going to change it so it's ADA accessible. And in programming meetings and subsequent meetings with Dr. Mitchell, we also would be doing the same kind of renovation for the city council, the city side front desk. So that, that would be upgraded at the same time. The clerk has a smaller space. The, the chief and detective Zhang would be upstairs as well as patrol sergeants, which would be sharing patrol sergeant space. And we have right outside of their, their patrol sergeant's office, we have two report writing stations so that they write on top of things. The existing toilet gets expanded so it can be ADA accessible. The equipment. The existing file room, which will continue to be existing file room. And that right now, I think is the holding area where they, they, they interview. And that, that would be changed to be, to take some of the patrol equipment that now the officers have to take from the lower level up. It would be on the upper level to begin with. They just would have to go outside with it. The site plan, and we're talking by the way, of about 3,700 square feet of space. The existing main floor space is about 1650 times two is 3,300. And I just want to go back, but if we add the space from the stair over to that existing storage area is about another 400 square feet. So the, the O'Brien Construction who did the estimating took off about 3,730 square feet for this renovation program. So we get to the outside of the north end of the building. And one of the requirements was to end up with more parking spaces that currently exist. So there's eight there now. We're proposing adding four more to get to 12 as well as covering them with carports, at least six of them with a carport and a small canopy over the north door for a little weather protection. And then put a masonry and metal gate around the, the parking, the police parking. So it would be secure and open or closed with a movable electronic gate. And then we are also proposing, given the future of electric vehicles, to have electric charging station, at least one for now. Which we could add more later on, depending on what happens to the makeup of the, the fleet in the future. We'll get into that. Commercial charging station is not an inexpensive item. Because you'd need, you would need to do a fast charge for the vehicles, given their nature. So in the lower level demolition, you can see the dotted lines. So right now it's a pretty open fitness area. Collection of various items from all over the city hall. There's a storage room. And then we have the men's and women's locker cell coat. And that's pretty easy for demolition there. The upper level, we'd really be taking out the partitions as they currently exist and reconfiguring the spaces we showed you on the first slide. So we get to cost projections. These are estimates and they include some things that we originally started. That were added during the discussion so that we, I'm trying to give you a complete total budget. Some of these things could be removed. And as I said, the, the charging station, which is included is a $50,000 item. I mean, it's not an insignificant amount of money. Dr. Mitchell and the chief and sergeant saying and our, myself went over possible grant items. Including live scan, the charging station, possibly even the commercial gate, the access control system. So that we get to the, let me just turn the page here. The card access electronic aid and access controls is another item of potentially upwards of $50,000. Which is a major expense. So, and the live scan itself is $35,000, 30 to 35,000 and the AV training room equipment, another 12 to 15,000. There's a furniture allowance in here. There's a design and construction manager contingency. So there is a cushion. And there's also the contractor's overhead and profit that's been projected. In addition to the hard costs, we, we estimate we add on soft costs, which are architectural fees, some of your owner costs, you may have surveys and soil borings that are normally items that are provided by the owner. And some of the FFNE that's not included in construction costs. So we have an allowance for furniture, for some furniture, but not a great deal of it. And I think with a new facility, want to consider reasonable furniture, which you can buy under a state contract that fairly, fairly wait, it's very competitive pricing, whether it be Steelcase, Herman Miller, or any of the other Michigan providers. And the let's see, so the exclusions, one of the things if we're going to renovate is where do we put the police department while the space is being renovated? And we have to think about that. I mean, it's possible may, the, the best way to do construction is to have the people who do demolition do it all at one time. To have the people doing the masonry and the painting do it all at one time. So if there's a potential space in city hall that you can give up for six months and move the police into that portion of the city hall building while the construction is going on, that would make things a lot better. The exterior building work, we didn't really get into the condition of the existing building, for instance, the, the foundations, the basement walls, how much leakage there is. If we're going to put in all this new arc and construction in the lower level, would we not want to go through and take a look at the exterior of the building and, and make sure that the, the foundations are good and that we waterproof that? So that we don't get into trouble three or four years from now. The emergency power generator and UPS systems, I think the engineers felt we needed a new transformer and the generator is probably not sized properly for 24/7 operation. We didn't have the engineers in though, so it was just a guess. Any kind of specialty storage areas? And then we didn't really look at the existing HVAC. We deferred that portion of the study to a later date to see what we would have to do to improve the major systems that were supporting that existing space right now. I anticipate we'd have to make some adjustments and we have some money in there to, to provide the, for the upgrading, for, for putting in new, the new plumbing and, and so on, and exhaust fans, but connecting to existing, that was the assumption. So I mean, all in all, the it's, it's, I think it's, I want to go back to the site plan provides a secure environment for the police cars to come in for, for the officers to enter. Separates the city hall public entrance from the north area. Police entry. I'm sure there's got to be some confusion. Once in a while, somebody tries to get in the wrong door. Carports would be good. And I think we can, we're also looking, you know, solar panels on the, on the carports to help and electrical outlets for the cars so that they can stay running and so on and so forth. The the interview room will be AV recording so that it could be a report writing room for the public to come in. It could be a suspect that's called in. It would have the AV recording capability. It could just be for privacy. So you don't have to give a report to an officer in the public lobby with people walking by. Many times you, the department will have somebody come in that has a very sensitive issue. It could be domestic violence. It could be a sexual abuse. Something like that where you need to take those persons back in. We have a person trap. I forget, Dr. Mitchell forgot, forgive me. I didn't change the word, but it's a salad court which provides the secure separation between the public lobby and the police operations. So that while you can get in, be let in to that person trap, you can't get any further unless somebody lets you into the police operations or meet you there and takes you into the, to the interview. And that's something that is done on a normal basis so that we there's too much information going on on whether it's the clerk's computer screen or the chief's or the detective sergeants. So we just don't want any, anybody to be able to walk through. And I really think the, given the number of people on shift, we, we felt that one, one toilet shower room for sex would be fine and and it has expansion. You can have your, your part timers and your volunteers also use those spaces as, as needed. There's a nice I don't know if you can see the arrow, but like a stand up counter with, with stools. Small kitchen area, but this can be report writing as well as briefing. And if we needed to, we could put a little desk here, so on and so forth. And there's again, another shower. So and this becomes the emergency exit out to the stairwell. So this is the the gist of where we are. I think we had really tremendous conversations with both the chief and Detective Zhang and, and Dr. Mitchell and this is, we've gone over this, we had a number of options. And I think one of the important things. Let me go back up to the main level. Is this plan, the chief and detectives name made a very important operational decision based on our discussions and the limited amount of space we had. And that was to, if they arrest someone or take someone, they're going to go right to Berkeley with that person. And not bring them to the station. And that freed up this whole area where we have report writing and patrol sergeant, that was going to be a detention interview area interrogation, whatever it was, processing. And we just didn't have the space. So I think that's a very important element of this design was that the, the department has decided to maybe, it's only nine minutes away to utilize the facilities that you're already paying for and not burden this facility and the renovation of it with detention kind of space. So I guess with that, I, I'm going to be, that's 15 minute presentation, but I think both Joel and I are open for questions. Should you have any?
Yeah, I have a question. Why is the the commercial grade level three charging stations too high, so high, should I say? You've got a lot of, you've got a lot of new users for charging stations. That price may be a little bit too high.
Well, $8,000 is the normal, normal cost for a normal station that you'll see at an airport or so on, or even in a shopping center. But the commercial grade, which is this high, I
Yeah, it's a, it's a quick charge. It's a quick charge, right?
Is, is, is when we had it priced, we just took a look at it. And if you go on the, on the internet and look at the pricing, you'll see that eight to 10, right up to 50. And I just felt that with police, with a police department, you just can't have a car sit out there waiting to be charged if someone's going to need it.
Right.
So
Do you happen to know what the, who the manufacturer is of the, of the charger?
I, I just, I just went online. I did not write that down. I was just trying to confirm pricing because my security guy told me it was very expensive. But if you just type Google, commercial grade, the charging stations, you're going to see something in that price range.
Yep. All right. Thanks.
Sure. Was Dale, was there anything else? You know, obviously the decision was made, you know, not to have a you know, to, to continue processing with Berkeley, but was there anything else that you, that you would typically design into a facility that you weren't able to do because of the limited size that we have?
Jen, let me just go to the lower level and you see this evidence processing and the little property area. Your department does not have a huge need for property storage. And the, nor does it have the need for pass through lockers and a property manager sitting on the other side to process. So in a larger agency, we would have a, a different configuration, but I think honestly, the, putting the evidence into lockers there and having the Detective Zhang or whoever the property officer is, take it out and put it in, in the property room is, is going to be more than adequate.
Yeah, but there weren't any, any major things that you, that you wanted to build, that you would normally build into a facility such as ours, but you couldn't do because of space?
No, not at all. The one, the one area would be a larger training room because departments like to the sponsor, the sponsoring department likes to get their people in for free and then bring other, they invite other departments in for the training. And so that would require the console chamber. So we, we looked at that. I'm not sure that, and that's really a decision of what other facilities are available. The, the console room with that north stair does provide does provide access from the main floor up to the second floor. And that's the fire exit for the console chamber. I don't have this. So the there's, there's a stair, there's an exit here and I think right here. Well, I can't tell that. I'm sorry. That's, that's a different thing. That's downstairs. But the console chamber could hold a much larger training area. It just needs to be secure from the public, which means a door.
And, and why, and I'm curious, why, why is that if they're, if they're doing training, oh, I had, because people then could use that as an access into the, the police facility. Never mind. I answered my own question.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that? Because that would mean with that, would that include employees? Cause that's where, that's where my office is. And that's for Jim Nelson's offices. So I'm wondering if that would factor into that.
Well, I think, I don't think so, because you'd probably get swipe cards that would allow your entry into that, into that space.
Okay. And you'd, you'd be outside of the new door.
Well, there is the door into, there is that glass door that enters into that whole wing.
Right. But I, I think he's talking, correct me if I'm wrong, Gang, but I think you're talking about putting a, a, a door where people physically enter into the council chamber.
Right, right.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, not, I think there was a little break area and
Yes.
Yeah, no, no, it doesn't have to be there. It could be right at where you enter that council chamber.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, the only, the only, the only, the reason why I was asking that question about the door, cause I was wondering if the door was totally necessary because sometimes what happens is I wish it would happen more often, but you know, we'll have a council meeting that'll overflow and people will stand in the hallways and listen and kind of come in and out, but it might be harder with the doorway there, but that's, that's not a huge, huge stomach. I'm just curious.
The, the issue really is if you're doing police training, you want it to be private police training and not having the public sort of wander in by mistake and disruptive.
Yeah.
Mr. Redstone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, if I just can chime in real quick. So when we decided to move all of our prisoner processing and holding to Berkeley and interviews and everything, that took a large, a, a large amount of space was able to be alleviated. And you know, accommodate what we're, what we're trying to do, but along with that, you also have your, you know, your AFIS machine, your fingerprinting, your photograph, your, your breathalyzer for OWIs. All of that equipment, all that technology and all of that will now be accessed at Berkeley. So if you're, when Bruce Cantor was asking about a wish list, I mean, that's a huge, huge endeavor, but you know, that'd be, that'd be on my wish list if we could have all of that. But again, with the limited space, we're better off doing, doing what we are right now.
Scott, do we have a, is there, is there an increase? I know, I know right now, I think for, for Berkeley, they charge us what $100 or $125 per prisoner per day. Does, does that amount go up if we're now doing other things there as well?
No, everything, everything that we are, everything that we're talking about, we're currently doing there now. And no, right now there we've got a really good relationship with the chief over there and it's just a hundred dollars flat fee per night.
Yeah. Great. Okay.
I would have to say to Scott, the chief, one of our first concepts was to add in addition to the north for a holding area. And expand out where we now showing patrol sergeant so we could accommodate all of the, the holding and the interrogation interview area processing. And it just, as the discussions went ahead, it just, we don't want to ruin the aesthetic of the existing building. I mean, it is a classic building. We're trying to do it all inside, with the exception of that canopy on the north door. So I think it's a good decision. I mean, it's 10 minutes away. The number of prisoners you process every at Berkeley is not an enormous amount. So I think it's, I think I like the decision. I mean, it really has helped the design and the flow and the, the operation that we're proposing. I think it works very well. I'm, I'm very happy about it.
Yeah, just two observations. So I'm looking at the, the, the men's locker room and it looks like if you got, if you did 10 on each side, you would be able to save space?
When you say 10 on each side?
10 female, 10 male?
Well, yeah. There were, there were two discussions that went on. One is the, the, the ratio of male, female. And the other issue, the other question that was discussed was, do we have one locker area with open locker ring and separate shower changing rooms? And the decision was to keep it as male female and the, the ratio is, is not a 50/50 ratio.
Okay.
So it's a, in fact, I think we have five, so it's 25% right now.
Right. But are we accommodating now or are we accommodating for how the future would look?
Yeah, I don't mine, my is, go ahead, chief.
Yeah, right now we have one female officer and one female reserve. So right now we're anticipating for the future with a total of five, you know, I hope we get to that, that point, but realistically, it's, it's more of a male profession. And you can see that with the numbers of what we have now.
So yeah, I don't, again, I don't think that it's going to change. In terms of the, we're not going to, I don't think we'll ever, well, in my lifetime, and I'm old, but 50, 50, 50 male, female, I don't think is going to happen. There, there is another point that it's in terms of the showering and so on. The existing toilet room next to the mechanical, should you ever have a transgender or issue that, that that shower change, shower room could also be used to, so you don't have to go into the male or female locker. Now we do have that, that new wall that is right by the stair at the lower level. And the so that, that'll be a secure door, security door, not really meant for entrance into the lower level, but exiting out. I think the police will still want to use that north stair for entering and egress and ingress.
Yeah, it looks good. Of course, the key thing is we just got to find the money to, to make it happen, which I'm sure you're aware of, but
I know.
The One thing I was thinking, you know, and this is getting way ahead, but you know, if, if we were to do something like this, depending on the situation, we might be able to work something out with Serno for a temporary usage of the you know, of the, of the school for, for the police force while the construction is being done. It's always a possibility.
Yeah, one of the, one of the, the costs though, that you should consider is the communication costs and the, the equipment costs. And to go to a remote location gets to be, even if it's only five or six months, you've got to, you've got to set, set up for that. It's all here right now.
Yeah.
So maybe can you relocate the council meetings or the for five months or six months or?
I'm sure we could. I mean, well, we, you know, we, we, we'd figure something out, but
I mean, it's my, it's our recommendation, having moved people out before that it's, it's, it's expensive.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there any other questions, concerns?
So, Mr. Redstone, what would be the next steps in this process?
Well, I think the next step is to confirm at least go through a schematic design where we bring the engineer At least go through a schematic design where we bring the engineers on board and we can do the analysis of the existing equipment. And get some better numbers so that the council. And the citizens have a better number than this, this is right now a ballpark projection. This is. You know, whether, this is the arena you're in and, and see what it actually is as we get the better. Identification of the engineering needs, systems needs, the architectural numbers that, the numbers keep going up. Material supplies in this area for labor, for construction materials are just going haywire here, so. So the next step is to probably go through a schematic design with engineering and go through finalizing. Some of these concepts and making decisions. The exterior, for instance, the fencing, choosing the materials, getting some. Renderings and so on, so you can see what we're talking about. As in terms of the aesthetic, get better pricing on the security and the cameras and. Put that together.
Cheryl, did you have anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Redstone.
That's my pleasure. It's, I think you have an exciting project and it's something that looks like it's very doable and we'll give Chief and P and. City of Lathrow Village, a very, very good department, space to, with which to operate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody.
Next, um, up for discussion is the sidewalk replacement program, tree root policy.
Madam Mayor, before you go there, could we have everyone indicate where they are attending from?
Ian Ferguson, Lathrow Village, Oakland County.
Bruce Cantor, Lathrow Village, Oakland County.
Kelly Garrett, Lathrow Village, Oakland County.
Thank you. And we received a message from Councilmember Donna Stallings that her health prevented her from attending today.
Thank you.
So for the sidewalk replacement program, if you recall, that is part of the improvements that we're doing. Over the course of the next three years and the initial section for starting this year will be. The residential area south of I six ninety-six eleven mile as well as the South Hill corridor. The estimated cost for the flags is between one twenty-five and one fifty each to replace. And the other element that we needed some input from council was relative to the sidewalks that are impacted. By the city tree roots, thus the trees between the sidewalk and the street. And we estimated based on the figures we have so far because they're doing the reassessment to determine the condition of each. Sidewalk flag is about twenty percent. And so Scott, who's Scott Ringler, who's on the call as well, has indicated that's probably going to end up being about one hundred. On sidewalk flags, which the total cost within the, which the estimate for the tree root grinding is one hundred dollars each. So that would be about a ten thousand dollar project should the city determine they were going to assume those costs for this year.
The one question I had, Cheryl, um, because I, I was actually, I mean pleasantly surprised at how low those numbers were. We, we are using three quarters inch for stubbers, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then that's, that's, that's great news because we were, we were thinking it would be higher just for, higher than that, just for. You know, this one section that we're doing, let alone for the, the three years, so. And I think the, the idea is, is, you know, why we, why we've been talking about this a, a lot is, is that. You know, it, it, it's the city trees that are causing this issue. You know, for these, these particular blocks and it would be nice, given, you know, all the costs that we're, we've been laying on the residents. You know, if we could do something for them, especially given that these, you know, while technically is their responsibility. You know, it would be great if we could, you know, at least help them out by, by doing the, the, the root grinding of our own trees. And, and, and just, just to be clear. Cause I know everybody's not as familiar, has not been living this for the last two years, but. The resident would still be paying for the, the, the concrete block replacement, but we would, we would be picking up the hundred dollar cost for the root grinding.
Yes, just the cost of the root grind.
Yeah.
And their cost of the sidewalk would be like a hundred and fifty dollars? Or flag?
And they also will be given the opportunity to spread those costs over two years if they want to enter into a payment arrangement. Because some people will have multiple flags.
I was just gonna say, it was, it's really good news to see that it was, it was so much lower than we anticipated in terms of just the total number of flags. Of course, that's kind of a newer section of the city on a relative, relative basis. So their sidewalks are probably in a little better shape, but still, that's pretty good.
Well, what is it that you, so we just need to get a consensus of, from the council that this is something that we want to do?
Correct. It's going to, it's on the regular council agenda, but we wanted an opportunity to talk about it before making that vote. And the recommendation is that the city assume the cost for the tree grinding.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Me too. E three.
Okay, so now you know what's gonna happen during the meeting. Any other questions about that? Good. Um, next is the culvert and ditch, the payment plan proposal.
This is also a part of the street and capital improvement projects that are going on. And in regards to the street plans for this year, there, I think there's eight properties that will need to have their ditches and culverts. Repaired and brought up to grade. The average cost is between seventeen hundred and twenty-eight hundred per property. And we've had at least one of the residents contact us asking if they could also have a payment plan relative to the repayment of those costs. So I, I wanted to present that to you to get your input on whether that's something you would be interested in doing. The residents would have similar to the sidewalks, they would have, in this case, three years, up to three years to pay because it's. Definitely will probably run more than a typical sidewalk repair. The payments being due each year by December first. Those, if they have a payment arrangement and that payment is not received by December first, then the entire balance would then go through the special assessment process. With the hearings and then be placed on the summer tax bill. Saying also indicating an administrative fee of one hundred dollars to establish a multi-year payment plan. And an administrative fee of one hundred dollars added for each year in which the balance is carried.
Yeah, just again, just to be a little bit more, give a little bit more detail. This is, this is for the eight homes who are required to replace their culverts. You know, as, as part of the, as part of the, the, the ditching improvement program. My, my question, Cheryl, and, and I don't know, I'm asking this. Just if, if this is commensurate with what happens with other kind of payment plans, is a hundred dollars to establish the multi? Your payment plan is, is that, it feels, feels a little high to me. It may not be, I, I, I don't know, but I'm just, just curious, is, if this is, you know, similar to other programs?
Well, it is, it's a little bit different. When I look at some of the other programs and it was usually the sidewalk program. There was an initial fee and then an interest charge, which was typically like six percent. And if you look at the two thousand dollars, we're gonna end up running a whole lot higher. So I thought this was a more reasonable approach. As well as everybody would be paying the same amount as opposed to someone who had a higher assessment having, you know, a, a different rate, so.
Yeah.
It was more equitable that way.
And the, and the second hundred dollars is only if they. So that's, that's for each, so it's each year they carry a balance?
Yes, so that'll be a maximum of three hundred dollars if they did all three years.
In addition, paying off the, the actual payment plan.
Correct.
So it would, it would be a hundred dollars to establish the payment plan and then if they, if they carried it for all, all, all three years. Then it would be an additional two hundred dollars. So the maximum they would pay would be three hundred dollars on top of the overall cost. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So what, what's the actual, um, the extra hundred dollars a year carrying over? I mean, what is that, what's that for? And what's the, I mean, I guess it was the.
Well, we have to set up an account for them and track all of the payments. We have to calculate the amounts and the balances. And do all of the accounts receivable relative to when those payments come in. And we're essentially loaning them the money upfront.
Right, so we're losing interest and opportunity cost?
So there's a lot of staff time involved in it. And there's no doubt in my mind, this is on the low side.
I get it. It just seems that that's a lot. If someone's already having, um, to have some issues with going on a payment plan to pay it. And then to put another three hundred dollars on top of it, just seems like a lot. This is my thoughts.
Yeah, just offhand, I, I kind of agree with Kelly that it seems, seems a lot. It seems like you'd have the one-time fee, maybe. Instead of annual, but I don't know if that's what we see on these kind of payment plans. I don't know, I haven't, I don't know, but it just seems a little high. I kind of agree with that.
Well, the, what you, was been used previously was the six percent, so on the two thousand, that'd be a hundred and twenty dollars. So. It was in the ballpark of what was done ten years or more ago.
And I probably would have balked at that also, so, but I mean.
I mean, it is up to you.
Yeah, I, I, if. I think that that's, that's a bit much. And I think that is also something that we're not asking them to do per se. The residents to do per se, we're telling them that they have to do this and then on top of it. How much it's gonna cost and then on top of that, even if you have to spread the payments out, we're gonna give you an additional three hundred dollars on top of it. That's just, it, it, it just, it's a lot going on that we're asking of the residents. I understand that it's eight people. This is, you know. This thing is a lot. And I, I, unfortunately, I don't have a solution to give you either. So I mean, I'm just saying as if it was something that was presented to me. As just the homeowner, how I would feel about it. Ian, anyone else have any?
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be averse to lowering it a little bit, but, um, but again, we are, you know, it, it does, in order for us to do that, it does require work. And we are floating them the money. And, and, and we're, and we're not, we're not telling them to do it. They're, they're required to do it because they're in violation of our ordinance.
But that's still telling them that you have to do it because violation, or telling someone, it's not like they can say, I'm opting out, put it that way, that they don't do it. And I know that it takes a lot of time with employees, but also, we could also end up being trued up. And having more employees too, right? Within that three years, don't we have some openings that could be? No?
That I know of. You know, something I don't know.
What, what, what about lowering it to like seventy-five dollars?
I think that, you know, just when I, when I'm thinking about laws, the initial one is always higher, right? And then you're, you're, the ones after that are any type of, not penalty, but a percentage is a little bit lower. So I don't want to be the one that's just making that, you know, decision. I'm just being conscious of what we've heard. Regarding everything else, because you know, one thing is your taxes are about to go up, your water bill is about to go up. And then for these eight people, then we're gonna do this also. So I, I think that we should come, it needs to be lower. Yeah, I agree.
And I add my two cents, this is Scott.
Yep.
So, you know, the residents that have it done by, by the city and their contractor, that work's gonna be paid for out of the bond issue. Cause it's contracted through the bond issue. So is what'll happen is they, when they make reimbursements, Pam's gonna have to take them reimbursements and reimburse the bond issue. Them funds to, to make that hole. So really. Really, the only thing the city's floating them is that two percent, probably about two percent interest rate that'll be on them bond issues. Along with any of the city's time. So there's really no money out of the city's pocket for this because it's going through the bond issue.
Okay, so we just need to set the minimum then? We just need to agree to that, right?
Right.
I'm looking at a letter from two thousand and one, they were given for a sidewalk, a four-year payment plan. For equal installments, the initial billing would be a ten percent interest rate thereafter. The remaining three payments would have a six percent interest rate, the unpaid balance.
But also, and, and you know, and just trying to just keep it extremely, be honest, but in two thousand and one. We, we by far are not experiencing the economic issues that we are experiencing right now. And I'm trying to be, um, again, very conscious of the things that I hear of people in. How their money is and we don't know when that's gonna really turn around. I just think that it does need to be lower. I think three hundred dollars is too much. On, on top of whatever the, the, because we don't know, we don't know the. Which price yet, right?
Yeah, the costs are pretty accurate.
I'm sorry, I need to scroll down then to read it, unless.
Seven, seventeen, seventeen.
I have other things on my brain as you probably, I won't put it on the recording, but we have some, my, my mother-in-law has COVID. And had to be put back on the ventilator, so I'm kind of going elsewhere. So I apologize that I'm paying attention. Okay, I'm back. Now, seventeen fifty will actually be two thousand, two thousand fifty, right? That's how much it will end up costing total. So I mean, maybe half of that might be more palatable.
One fifty, yeah, I agree with that. Just make it just like the sidewalks.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be more comfortable at about seventy-five because the city is gonna have work that they're gonna have to do. It is gonna cost us money to do this. Plus, you know, you lose out on interest.
You're gonna lower than one fifty?
No, I'm saying lower, lower those fees from a hundred dollars to seventy-five. So it'd end up being a maximum of, I guess, two twenty-five.
So seventy-five for each year?
Yeah. I don't know, I'm, I'm one voice, so.
I, I, I'm kind of with Kelly. It's like fifty dollars per year for a one fifty max. I think it's good.
Yep, I'm good with that.
So you'll just need, when you make the motion, um, in the main session to make that modification.
All right, give me that modification again.
It's just the number, the numbers dropped to fifty from a hundred of the, the last two bullet points.
Okay.
So they dropped from a hundred to fifty.
We're talking eight people, so it's not gonna be a lot of money.
Actually, we're not even talking that, so I mean, because, because we've only had one person request a, a, a payment plan, so.
Well, we get two. I talked to, I talked to a president this morning, but still.
Even, even, even if it's all eight, it's not that big of, it's not that huge of a deal.
Yeah, it's not. So I think it's, I think we're good if we lower it to fifty a year.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other on the culverts and ditches, over ditch? Okay, next the sign ordinance.
God, and Suzie can take this one.
And we did, uh, so this is. We, I guess it's been over a year that we've been working on this or. Events that took place last year prompted us to, to move the sign ordinance forward with the planning commission and then it. Kind of stalled out after planning commission did the first public hearing. So this is, it's back tonight for the, the final reading and approval by council. Last month, there was some, some questions about the. Temporary signs in, for residents, for residential property. So we did revert that back to what is currently in the ordinance. And taking away the. Number based on linear foot of, of frontage to make it more equitable. And then carved out a separate for. For sale signs. I think that's.
That was the only change. We took, basically looked at.
That was the only change. Uh, we took basically looked at your email, Bruce, with your notes and kind of reconciled that with the with the rest of it.
I think everything else was the same from last week, last month.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I did have one one question, Scott. I know we talked about this in 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 planning commission. I don't remember what the response was, but. With respect, again, with respect to the the freestanding signs. Um, we have a we 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 set a limit of 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 sixty-five days and then a thirty-day off period. Um, for this before the same sign can be can be put back out. Is is there any way, I mean, the, you know, because basically what that means is there's there's no way to enforce that. I mean, you know, we've talked about this in a variety of issues in the past. So would would there be some way we could we could bake into the ordinance? I was thinking about this last night where if if and this might be a little too onerous, but I'd just be interested in other people's thoughts. Where if somebody wants to put temporary signs, we just a no-fee registration with the city. That they're putting it up so that we know that it's up. And and if somebody then, you know, complains about a sign and it's not registered. Then we make the assumption that that sign has been up for sixty-five days. They have to be off for thirty, and then they can put it back out again. Uh, because I mean, we have no mechanism to be able to enforce this.
Right. And that the problem is, is it it kind of gets into that gray area of the of regulating free speech and what you're going to allow for. Um, you know, the the time-place manner restrictions that are allowed. It's 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 an area that evolves a lot and every and so I think leaving it the way it is somewhat purposefully ambiguous. Because you're right, it's it's hard to enforce that. It's just like the the, you know, painting the tires on and the parking. The overnight parking in the same spot type situation. It's just um. Requiring them to register. I I'd have to double check, but I believe that that is permissible. You can do that. That's not that's not an unnecessary restriction. But but again, I think the the timing thing, that's something that's subject to change. And then we're not constantly having to go back and change your ordinance if, you know, as the law changes. So my recommendation would be to leave it the way it is with, you know, with the understanding that, you know, some people will put signs up that have have a message that's. Meaningful to them and, you know, they're they'll take it down when they're ready.
Right, right. I mean, I guess I guess where it's possible case if somebody complains about a sign, somebody goes over there, sees it's there, then we know it's up. And if sixty-five days later, it's still up.
Right.
And, you know, you 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 know, it just it just delays the time that makes it a little bit longer that it's up there. It's not a, yeah, I was just just kind of thinking out loud here. On that, I think it looks looks good.
I should have printed it up also, Bruce. Okay, so getting back. The ability to levy city taxes on, I'm sorry, everyone, there any other questions on sign ordinance? Okay, ability to levy city taxes on winter tax bill?
Yeah, so I I brought this up. Kelly and and Cheryl and I had a meeting on a pre-council meeting on Friday and. And um, one of the things that we've run into a lot over the last couple of years, um, as we've been, you know, strategizing. You know, how to how to pay for all of these various improvements that we we've been doing. And and it's come up even before that was. You know, we, you know, we we said many times where it would be nice to, you know, have this millage or, you know, this this increase. Happen in the winter instead of the summers. Because basically, right now, our our charter says that, you know, our 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 taxes are due in the. In the summer, and we don't really have much of an ability to uh put any of the city types of taxes in 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 with the winter taxes. So we were thinking, you know, maybe, you know, trying to change the the charter to to give council. A little bit more latitude in terms of how we how we levy the taxes and when we levy them so that that we're not hitting residents quite as hard. So, um, you know, it would have been would have been really nice with this this millage that's that's going into effect for the roads had we been able to say, all right, well. That we'll we'll put that in the winter taxes. And that way, it's not adding even more to what people are paying in the summer. So, um, you know, it's it's not suggesting that we add more taxes, but it it it's a way of giving us. Um, a little bit more um flexibility in terms of of how we dole out the taxes and 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 give people the ability to. Uh, more flexibility to be able to be be able to pay them. And because it's it's a charter, Scott, it would require a vote of the residents, correct?
Uh, yeah, it would be a charter amendment, which you could you could put on a ballot um for. Voter approval. And then the the one thing, the question that I had, and I did look at it briefly this afternoon, was with respect to the. Collection for delinquent taxes. I mean, at the end of the year, we turn over anything that hasn't been paid by December first goes to the county for collection. And that so the timing on that might for the, you know, we're not saying the bills out until December. We might not get the, you know, they wouldn't be due until February then. So there may be something like some issue with that the first year, but but it is, there are other cities do it. City Detroit probably being the biggest one that they have a an extended season allow for payments over. I think the the property tax bills go out July first, and you have until February twenty-eighth to pay them. So it gives you, it gives it a bigger window. City of Jackson also does something similar that like lets their residents make um. Installment payments on their on their tax bill to help spread it out. So and again, all of that would be accomplished through a charter amendment. Just, you know, instead of just flipping the dates, maybe giving them more time to to make those payments or extending out the the deadline from. You know, I think it's September. Pam, what's September first is when they're due?
August thirty-first for the summer.
Okay, yeah, so. So, you know, you maybe give them a little bit more time. Oh. Uh, again, though, just like we were talking about, um, usually there's a fee involved with an installment plan because it does require additional staff time to. Track and account for that. So. But yeah, those 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 would all or could all be accomplished through a charter amendment.
And would that waive the penalties and interest then for the?
Depending on how it was done, yes. If it was, if they, if you were to extend the the payment period, um. Then, yeah, you wouldn't be charging penalty or interest during that extended period. I guess really, like I said, it would be depending on what council would like to do. If they would like to do anything, we could, we could, uh. You know, prepare ballot language to that effect and.
Well, let me ask a question because it kind of seems like we went off on a little bit of a tangent that I wasn't expecting. And then I want to make sure I'm I'm clear on it. Because because what I was, what I what I was bringing up is is the ability to, you know, levy some of these texts, like the millage, for example. Um, so that it would be would be paid in in the winter. But now you're, it sounds like you're also kind of saying that we could. Extend dead, if we if we have the ability to to pay it two different times, then the the deadlines would change a little, could could change a little bit too. Is that that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I felt. Like I said, I did a little bit of research this afternoon on it, and I found other cit- that's what other cities had done. I was I was looking for other communities that did collect theirs. I'd say ninety-five to nine, probably ninety-eight percent of the cities collect their city taxes in their assessments in the summer. And that's because under the state tax law, the the school, the school taxes collected in the summer. And then the the county handles the collection and the delinquent taxes at the end of the year. It gets rolled over and then the city gets cut a check for whatever. Hasn't been paid from the county, and then the county handles the collection of of the delinquent taxes. So after you you miss your deadline, you you no longer pay the city, you would pay Oakland County. With this, with us flipping that, I think it would change, at least for the first year, maybe subsequent years, we would be, you know, but. You know, we want the the tax won't be due to the city until February. So, you know, the city wouldn't be turning over to the county when we do our January tax. Delinquent tax rolls. So, but the one other option that I did find was, like I said, City Detroit, City Jackson allow for a a longer. Payment window, which may give residents that are struggling financially more time. What I think is probably going to happen is they're just going to wait until the the extended deadline, and they're probably not going to save any money or make payments. But uh, they'll still run into the same issues. It'll just be later in the year. But um, yeah, just just another option to to try and achieve the same result.
Would you have any other um?
No, I just I just think it's it's worth, it's worth discussing. I'm sorry. I guess the the question is, is do we want to have? You know, do we want to consider having, you know, Scott, work on that a little bit to, you know, give us something to review and and. Give us a little bit more detail and what what ballot language might look like or something like that.
I think, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea to open it up to kind of get some input from the residents. I mean, I I know we're we've been accused of not taking enough resident input when we uh. We make decisions like this that impact the residents. So, you know, give them an opportunity to uh. To weigh in or not, and then they can't say anything that that you they weren't consulted beforehand.
Yeah, I guess I I'd like to see like. You know, just. Kind of a a schedule of what what you you were kind of mentioning would look like, Scott, you know what I mean? What would happen on by what day? Because I'm still still a little bit confused on that. I I was. I brought this up from a much more simplistic perspective than uh than, you know, what it's taken on. And I I I kind of understand. I understand the gist of what you're saying, but I would like to understand it in a little bit more detail.
Oh, so let me see if I understand. So Scott, are you saying that if the tax bill is issued in December. It would not go to the county that spring, but it actually would have to go until the following year when we know. Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. No.
Nope.
It's got to go to in the spring. March first, we turn all delinquent taxes over to the county.
But I don't know that if you. If it wasn't due until the fourteenth or or whatever the the winter tax date is due.
February fourteenth, but we collect until the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth of February.
But don't.
They get turned over to the county.
We do our, don't we do our delinquent city tax rolls in January of every year for like the nuisance cuts and the water?
Would be added on the taxes, but that's not saying that's the um. If you guys are talking like the millage or anything like that, that's the the um special assessment starts.
So that that's what I was kind of thinking you were trying to spread out were those assessment costs. But if it's not. If it's not that, then, yeah, I guess the delinquent taxes or just taxes could still go, but.
Yeah, I mean, Scott, I was just thinking in terms of of flexibility, like, you know, there there's been, we've had conversations over the last couple of years where. Like I was thinking of like the Cambridge Special Assessment. At one point, we were talking about doing this and said, well, we could put it on the, it'd be great if we could put it on the winter taxes. You know, uh, you know, so that we we wouldn't have to go a year with getting payment. And then we, you know, although all that changed. But there's been several discussions that 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 we we've had over the last couple of years where, you know, we said, well, could we put this in? Could we start, could we collect this on the winter? And and the answer was always no. Um, and and so I was just thinking it might be nice to have more flexibility. I wasn't thinking about along the lines of, you know, extending payment dates and things like that. I was just thinking of giving us a little bit more flexibility. Like, I mean, it would it would have been great for this this road millage had we been able to collect that particular assessment in the winter. So, you know, that would make things a little bit easier for the residents. So now, you know, you got somebody who just moved in, who's been uncapped. And so now it's in addition to their taxes, you know, that they have in the summer, which is the majority of their taxes. Now they're hit with another thousand or fifteen hundred dollars for the roads. It'd be nice if that could be, you know, could have happened in the winter. So all the road millages were assessed in the winter, but we don't, we don't have that flexibility the way things are set up.
So you're talking, Bruce, you're talking millage, the road millage that we have? That will be put onto the summer this year? You're talking.
Yeah, or just, yeah, I mean, and 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 it's in those kinds of, as we've been talking about some of these projects, that that's. That's had that that conversation has happened multiple times. Well, could we put this in the winter? Oh, no, we can't. We got it on the summer. So I I was just trying to get a little bit more of a flexibility if we if it was possible.
Okay, because the way I I'm understanding is you keep saying special assessment, special assessment.
Oh, maybe I'm using the wrong terms. I'm just thinking.
Because it is a millage.
Yes, yes. Maybe maybe that was my bad.
And that's our charter says that we collect our millage or we collect our millages in the summer.
Right, right. Like another 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 example. So we just talked about the 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 police. So let's say we go out to the to the voters. You know, for for a millage for a police station, um, you know, it would be great if we did that, if that millage could be. Could hit the residents in the winter instead of the summer to make it even more payment that they have to do with the summer. So I'm just trying to get, you know, a little flexibility that way. That's what that's all I'm talking about. I may have said the wrong term, so I apologize.
But again, I think it would be worth asking the residents too, because, you know, a a lot of them, if they have a a mortgage on their home, they probably escrow their taxes and are. Paying it in twelve installments anyways. And so they might not even realize. You know, that, you know, what the summer tax bill is versus the winter tax bill.
Right.
Unless it's someone that, you know, their home is paid off or they they have opted out of the escrow. So I think it's worth getting some feedback before you dive too far into it. And like I said, I I was just bringing up the payment options as a as an alternative to moving it, because I was under the impression that it. I had the presumption it may cause some conflict with that collection of what the county does in the timing of the county. So that that's the only reason I brought up what what I found in Jackson and and Detroit, so.
Cheryl, any ideas on how we might run this by residents or anyone else?
Um, yeah, give it to Suzie.
Sounds sounds like a plan.
You could do a survey as part of your weekly newsletter, your newsletter or something that lets residents weigh in on it.
Going to do a doodle poll. Can't we just do a doodle?
Why don't you just, we'll send it to, you know, some of the outspoken residents and let them get it.
Yeah, but that that might be good. Like if we could do some type of survey as part of the newsletter in the next next few months, that'd be that'd be cool.
Yeah.
He said about the the. Right, the the sir, excuse me, the newsletter that goes out in the mail or the one that's electronic or both?
Could be both.
Uh, your town is, I just got our email from Cory saying, hey, it's about time for your your town.
I'm asking is because then, yeah, we can do definitely like a Google form um kind of survey for the electronic one. I'm not sure if there's a way that we could kind of put like a a bitly type of um. Something in the written our town. That way you get it faster.
Yeah.
So let me ask this, Scott and Pam, if if it were approved as a charter amendment. Can we take existing millages and spread them over the two dates?
Yeah, you would. You would be moving your city tax collection to the winter. So and I'd have to, I don't know what the breakdown is, what Pam would know better than that, like what. Are you then just flipping and making your winner one the larger tax bill versus the summer one?
I don't, can you do half and half? I don't think you can, but I'd have to check that out. I know the school was talking about moving all theirs to the summer, their breaks, and we I kind of talked them out of that, so.
Yeah, because well, that, well, the for city taxes, the charter is controlling over state law. So I guess we could write it however we want. Like you could do debt service millages and police and fire millages in the winter and all the other city taxes on the summer or something like that. I'd have to look, I'd have to look more into splitting it. I mean, it's going to make more work for you, I think, and sending them and figuring and accounting for all of it. But this is a, this is a Salima. This is a question for our our accounting firm to find out what um. The what the, you know, what are the generally accepted accounting principles as far as they're separating that at that? If we don't want to get in trouble in there either, so with our audit.
Yeah.
Just from a survey standpoint, um. Are we are we thinking that this would be something that we would want to get on the November ballot? And what is the deadline for that? If we haven't, so I can.
It it I I don't, I don't think this isn't. I don't think this is anything that's pressing. I think we just move at the pace that we move at. And, you know, we typically, we have at least a couple of elections a year. And we just do it where it fits, you know?
That I'm fine with that as long as you're fine with that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I'm all I'm trying to do is just try to make things easier on the residents. So if there's a way to financially moves off, put some of what hit some in the summer into the winter, at least to have the flexibility to do that. I think that's great. If we can't do it, we can't do it.
Okay.
All right, any anything else on that? And Kelly asked me to take over for a minute, so.
Nope, I do have a question in regards to the council agenda. Uh, Scott Wrangler had inquired if you wanted him to be in attendance, especially for the um the street recommendation for twenty twenty-two. I didn't know if you wanted him there.
Scott, if if you've got something. Scott, if if you've got something else to do, I I I think I can handle that, it's not that big of a. Issue, and I I know what all the 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 choice issues were, so, you know, the criteria, so I I I can handle it if you've got something else, somewhere else you got to be.
I really don't, I was just asking.
Yeah, so so if you want, if you want to attend for it, that's fine, if you if you don't, uh, you know.
So I I was just, if he, if he were to stay, I was just going to suggest perhaps moving that to the first item under twelve, so he didn't have to stay past. Whatever he.
Yeah, we could, we could do that too.
Don't worry about it.
Okay.
Hey, I got a question regarding the police renovations, police. Uh, office renovations.
Okay.
So, so I'm looking, you know, looking at the estimated total, and I suspect that Mr. Redstone probably will come back and the number. Will probably be higher because of materials and because of, you know, after going through the schematics and making those numbers firmer. We're actually right in the ballpark, and the ballpark I'm talking about is. Uh, purchasing Annie Lathrop's school and really piecemealing that out, so have we thought about approaching? The Cernow's to purchase that school, because we're really there with that number. We're there now with one point one million dollars with renovations.
Right, but they, I mean, it's certainly, certainly worth a discussion, but I think that, I mean, that would. That would just buy the building, you know, if even that, um, and and then the other thing is, and I think Suzie's probably going to say this. As well, is that I don't think he's looking to sell that building.
Well, we don't know, well, yeah, I think we do know, Ian.
I I think, I I know what, uh, one. The fact that Cernow wasn't even willing to give a huge developer, even a fake number. And to go away tells me that they have zero interest in actually selling that property, I I I truly don't think. They would, and if they're not going to sell it to those guys, I, they're not.
You're you're talking about the the plan that was supposed to come to council, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know the update on that, what happened there?
There, the the update is, there is no update, they, they had, we, they had. Um, the developers submitted their letter of intent to Cernow back in. January and Cernow said, I think we need to revisit this in like the end of the second quarter. And then they, and the developer said, will you give us a number for what you would like for this property, and they said, no. So that effectively killed the deal. Um, I, in addition to that, I. The the cost, the cost that Mr. Redstone gave us are, I mean, I have, I I, they seem reasonable. For for what he's proposing. Um, that, this, to take the school and rehab the school is going to cost. A significant amount more with all of the remediation.
Right.
Cost did not have any um, systems upstate updates to except for minor HVAC repairs and that school. Is going to have to have all new wiring, all new plumbing, all new HVAC, all new telecom, like. Everything, I, I don't think it's, um, and I don't have the numbers in front of me for what the developer was proposing for rehab, but. It, that right there kind of kills that particular site, I think, I mean, if we want to purchase another property for it, then. We could do that, but I don't think that's the right one.
Okay. So what's the relationship with Cernow in the city at this point?
Yes, I I I talked to Rob on a somewhat regular basis about the properties that they are looking to lease out. But, um. Not. Um, but we have not spoken about the the school. You think that they're holding out on anything because um, it's a lot of their buildings I've noticed in there are the ones that are empty. Um, the, I think it's a mix, um, I think for the school in particular. My gut tells me that they're trying to figure out how they can do it themselves. And and go it alone on a big, um, on a big development.
Well, they could have partnered with the with the developer, with.
And that was, that was going to be part of the arrangement, as I very vaguely understood it, but I think they want to completely go it alone. Um, and I, so I, it's either that or they're just sitting on it and letting it deteriorate, so they have an art, a case to be made to tear it down.
I think.
Would be an absolute shame.
No, I think that's where we're going, because, look, you you're doing all this development in Birmingham, it's not like. You're ignorant to the fact that you could come up with something creative, and another company came to you to say, hey, here's my model. Even if you are a a corporate thief, you can say that could work and you have the building, you could go do it, right? It it doesn't make sense to me, so I think what you explained is the latter, I think it's going to continue to be a tax write-off. And at some point, the residents are going to have to make a decision whether or not we tear it down, that's it.
But we can't, if we don't own it.
Well, what I'm saying is they're going to come to us, they're going to want to tear it down.
We, I mean, they can.
It's not our property.
Not our property, nothing we can do about that. Um, I, I think for the happiest, the happiest site, though, I know that they've been, they, I mean. Just like almost every other property owner along Southfield has been appro, they were approached for cannabis. And it would not, now that, for that particular location, it would not shock me in the slightest if they throw in for. A license for a cannabis license if you choose to move forward with that, because it's one of the only sites. That um, is in what they call the green zone, right, so I I, I think that's what we'll see.
Yeah, but it's a school.
Right, but.
That's not.
Correct me if I'm wrong there, but Bruce, but Bruce, correct, not Bruce, but Scott, correct me if I'm wrong regarding the the Annie Lathrop's school, it's a historical building, I thought we had. Either ordinances in place that would not allow anyone to tear something down unless we, they had to come to council.
They have to go to the historic district.
They have to go to the historic district, but if, I think it's, if it's, the property is gone so far past rehabilitation. Then that would, then it's permissible, and, but that's one thing, and, you know, they're not, the school property is not uh, in in an area because of its. Uh, proximity to a park for cannabis unless that, and I know there's been some people requesting that those. Those proximity locations be relaxed um, to accommodate their their buildings, um, so. But I think Happy's Pizza location is permissible. Unless we put that park in that we've been talking about for fifteen years. Yeah, real quick, I had the uh, sign ordinance doesn't appear on action items. Is that a? My missing.
No, the sign, I thought my understanding was the sign ordinance was to be a discussion today and then on the May agenda.
Oh, okay. And then any questions on the ZBA stuff?
No, I reviewed it, no, no questions. Yeah, I I had one thing I wanted to bring up, um. There's, we have, uh, again, in our Friday meeting, we had talked about, um. Uh, you know, there's been a, again, a rise in complaints by residents of speeding and rolling stop signs and so forth, and so what we had talked about on Friday was. Possibly having a, um, you know, like, may being, you know, residential, you know, road enforcement month or something like that, where we up the. You know, really focused on 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 residential enforcement uh, during that month, but um, talked to to Scott and I think he's on the line, the key. Earlier today, and what he's already done is he's already asked the um. Uh, officers to dedicate at least one hour of of every shift to patrolling the the residences for, you know, speeding and ignoring. Stop signs and so forth, um, so that's, that's, that's already underway, and so hopefully that will, we'll we'll kind of nip that in the bud to to some extent. Um, so that we don't have to do something quite as as major as, you know, having a, um. You know, a a speed enforcement month or so forth, so, um, you know, unless anyone has a problem with that, I know Kelly, we and Cheryl, we had talked about this. Um, on Friday, so unless you guys have a problem with it, I think, I think Scott's solution is a good way to move forward.
So I thought we were, um, and maybe I misunderstood what we talked about, I thought we were going to do exactly how we did. Um, Southfield Row when we did the collaboration with the other city, other cities.
Right, I I. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
No.
I was, I was just gonna say, I I threw that out as as a, as an analogy, you know, doing something similar to that, and that's when we said we would have like a May enforcement month. So it wouldn't, wouldn't be with other communities, it would just be for our residential area, and 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 Scott has already, already, you know, set that up. Just, you know, to some extent by increasing patrolling in the, in the residences, so. Um, you know, my my thought, you know, was, is, you know, makes sense to maybe see how that goes, and if we still start getting tons and tons of complaints, then maybe we go to something. More dramatic, like an announcement of a monthly program or something.
So my understanding is, it's not so much of the patrol one, because that would probably, um. Um, concern me that it's not being patrolled now, so, uh. My understanding is the fact is that there's just not tickets given, and I think that the biggest thing that we just need to do. Um, alongside with those patrols is issuing of tickets. If they are residents or not, because it is, it it is, it's very dangerous, it is.
That is, the other component part of the action that's already being taken is that the officers are requested not to just issue a verbal warning. But to actually issue a warning regardless of the residency. So we can track what's happening.
So we're not, I mean.
Did you mean ticket or?
Written warning.
Written warning.
Right.
Okay, so that, does that require, um. Uh, you know, showing off a court, or what does that require once you get a written warning? I haven't had a ticket in a while.
I would have to check with the chief in regards to the any distinctions.
So no, you don't have to show up for court, it's just it's tracked in their clemish system, it shows that you've had an officer encountered and you had previously received a warning.
Okay.
So if an officer pulls you over a second time, they can see that.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And we haven't done that before, right?
It wasn't. Strongly requested of the officers, so it was left, left to their own discretion, so some did and some. Prefer to issue a verbal warning.
Yeah, yeah, and Kelly, for my, and I don't know if Scott is still on the line, but for my conversation with them earlier today, it it's not that they're not. Going into the neighborhoods, but their their focus is, has been, you know, much more on Southfield Road and the major thoroughfares. Um, and so he said he's asked his officers to spend at least an hour of their shift in the, in in the residences, residential areas.
And in speaking with the chief today, he also indicated, um, compared to adjacent communities, we issue far more tickets. Violations than some of the other smaller communities, so it's not that we're not, but there's definitely a need for.
I was just going strictly off of the email that.
I I got you.
Anything else, so, uh, I'm not doing comparisons of other cities, I'm just doing was what was written. So, um, I just think that that it is a dangerous, um, situation. Um, I, you know, I live on one of the the fastest thoroughfares, so I see it, I I, you know. I get it. So, I lost my, um, as usual, I don't know where my.
These two. And then one, one, I'm sorry. I see one other, one other comment before you go to public comments, um, I just wanted to let everybody know if you haven't seen it already, we we started with a. A a public service announcement, uh, series, um, about all the. Uh, road and and infrastructure improvements, so the first uh, public service announcement, we recorded it, what, I think. Two weeks ago, and now it's been out for a week now or something like that. Um, so it's about a fifteen-minute announcement and basically talking about, not only about what the. Uh, improvements are to kind of educate people on what's happening, but also what effect it's going to have on them, so, you know. If you live on these streets, you're going to have the summer a two to three, two to three week full closure, you know, this is what it means for your mail, this is what it means for your garbage, this is what it means for your chipping. Um, here's where you're going to park, that that kind of thing, so, just, um, you know, trying to get out in front and get the information to people, so, uh. So this, this, these projects go as smoothly as possible, so our plan is to do more of those, I don't know what the timing is when we'll do the next one, but, um. Um, you know, just that when we have enough information, we'll, we'll do a PSA, so.
Where do you find that?
Oh, yeah, thanks, I meant to say that, uh, yeah, it it it's on the, it's on the city website, it's on the YouTube page, it's on the 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 city website on the. If you go to the infrastructure page, so if you click on residents on the, on the main uh, window, and then go to the dropdown and hit infrastructure on that page. Um, it it has the the PSA on there, you can click on the video, it's also on, I think it's on our Facebook site. Um, it's running on Public Access TV. The Cheryl, is it?
It's on the Facebook page, it's a public access site.
Yeah, are we, are we, are we running, running it on the public, public TV?
Yes.
Yeah, on public TV, and then, uh, uh, I think it's, I think it's also on villagers as well.
Okay, thanks.
So now that we only have, um, one minute of public, um, comments, I wonder, is there anyone here who would like to speak for one minute?
We have, we have no public, just Jill and Rami.
Okay, all right, then, um, I will, um, end this study session and see you in the next, uh, meeting.